I hereby call the 13th day of the second regular session of the 24th Congress to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abellon Ponsol.
Amen, Garcia Lilia May.
Senator Arutaz. Senator Asher. Senator Chour.
Present.
Senator Christian. Senator Collin. Senator Conman. Floor Leader Marar. Senator Muthong. Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romalong. Senator Segura.
Yes, good morning.
Speaker Moses.
Hey.
Mr. Speaker, 12 members are present.
With that, we have a quorum to transact business. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item four, reading of the Journal.
You go.
Floor Leader, you have the floor.
I move that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal.
Short recess. Floor Leader, you have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal. Any objections? Discussion? If none, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item five, presidential communications. We have received all of them, and they are numbers 24-133 and number 24-134, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Please assign those. Next item.
Item seven, Supreme Court communications. We do not have any at the moment, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Item seven, member communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item eight, departmental communications, Mr. Speaker. Item nine, agency or government authority communications, we do not have, Mr. Speaker. Item 10, state communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item 11, state Supreme Court communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. Item number 12, municipal or town communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Foreign government communications for item 13, we do not have, Mr. Speaker. And item 14, miscellaneous communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Order of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the order of the day, we have item number 15, standing committee reports. Kindly refer to the awaiting list number 24-10 for standing committee reports awaiting the 24 hours requirement.
Short recess. Congress, our session was still on item number 15, the standing committee reports. Chairman Nemea.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to withdraw and place on the day's calendar committee report, standing committee report 24-23, so I move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number 24-23. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that Congress suspend any rules that may impede our action on this measure.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress suspend the rules that may impede our action on the placement of standing committee reports, mainly the report awaiting 24-hour period. Any objections to the said motion? Any discussion? If none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We are now on placement of standing committee report 24-23. Any objections to the session? If none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now placed on the agenda for action. Standing committee report number 24-20. Chief Clerk, next report.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next report, under the standing committee reports for item number 15, standing committee report number 24-23, regarding presidential communication number 23-573 on the FY 2026 budget from your committee on means for adoption.
Chairman Nemea.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of said standard.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopts committee report number 24-20. Discussion? Any discussion on the said report? If none, and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the adoption of standing committee report number 24-23. All those in favor of said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted standing committee report number 4-23. Report, Chief Clerk.
None, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item 16, special committee reports, none also, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 17, for assignment of measures and communications, please refer to referral sheet number 24-23, Mr. Speaker.
Chairs and members, please take note of referral sheet. I believe we do have some grants in there. Next one.
Unfinished business for item 18, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number nine, bill calendar. The first bill under the bill calendar is congressional bill number 24-72 for second and final reading. See number 24-72 is bill for not to further amend public law number 20-31, amended by public laws numbers 21, 20-50, 277, 20-130, 21-24, 11-5, 11-83, 1-101, 21-133, 21-204, 21-220, 20-79, 22-113, 22-130, 23-65, 23-136, 23-165, and 24-08, by amending sections 4 and 6 thereof to change the use and allottee of certain funds as we appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs that people of Punggol State and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemea.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of congressional bill 24-72 on second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, CB number 24-72. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, no objection, debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Juk, Chairman Arutaz. For the state of Punggol, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madam Chair Segura.
Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Chour. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number 24-72. Next bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next bill is congressional bill number 24-73, CD1, for second and final reading. CB number 24-73, CD1, is a bill for not to further amend public law number 19-124, as amended by public laws numbers 19-133, 19-140, 19-150, 20-05, 20-15, 20-33, 20-48, 20-63, 20-71, 20-156, 20-175, 21-22, 21-52, 21-146, 21-155, 21-195, 21-213, 21-244, 22-25, 22-62, 22-111, 23-38, 23-55, 23-62. twenty-three dash one thirty-one, twenty-three dash one fifty, and twenty-four dash twenty-three twenty-three dash one thirty-one, twenty-three dash one fifty, and twenty-four dash twenty-three by amending sections three, four, and six thereof to change the use and allottee of certain funds previously appropriated therein by amending sections three, four, and six thereof to change the use and allottee of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund priority infrastructure projects and other programs for Kosai and Pompey states and for other purposes. to fund priority infrastructure projects and other programs for Kosai and Pompey states and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemia? Chairman Nemia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of congressional bill twenty-four dash seventy-three on second and final reading. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of congressional bill twenty-four dash seventy-three on second and final reading.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-three, CD one. It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-three, CD one. Discussion? Discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If none, and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief clerk, please call the roll. If none, and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Aradas. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Aradas. For the state of Ponte, Chairman Christian. For the state of Ponte, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Sigra. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Sigra.
Yes. Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Chor. For the state of Yap, Chairman Chor. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash twenty-three. Next bill? With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash twenty-three. Next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the bill calendar now, congressional bill number twenty-four dash seventy-five for second and final reading. Under the bill calendar now, congressional bill number twenty-four dash seventy-five for second and final reading. CB number twenty-four dash seventy-five is a bill for not to further amend public law number nineteen dash fifty-four CB number twenty-four dash seventy-five is a bill for not to further amend public law number nineteen dash fifty-four as amended by public laws numbers nineteen dash sixty-two, nineteen dash seventy-five, nineteen dash seventy-nine, nineteen dash ninety-nine, nineteen dash one nineteen, amended by public laws numbers nineteen dash sixty-two, nineteen dash seventy-five, nineteen dash seventy-nine, nineteen dash ninety-nine, nineteen dash one nineteen, twenty dash oh four, twenty dash fifty-six, twenty dash eighty-two, twenty dash one twenty-seven, twenty one dash twenty, twenty one dash one seventeen, twenty dash oh four, twenty dash fifty-six, twenty dash eighty-two, twenty dash one twenty-seven, twenty one dash twenty, twenty one dash one seventeen, twenty one dash one sixty-nine, twenty one dash one seventy-four, twenty one dash one ninety-four, twenty one dash two oh five, twenty one dash one sixty-nine, twenty one dash one seventy-four, twenty one dash one ninety-four, twenty one dash two oh five, twenty one dash two thirty-three, twenty-two dash fifteen, twenty-two dash fifty-four, twenty-two dash one oh nine, twenty-three dash fifty-two, twenty one dash two thirty-three, twenty-two dash fifteen, twenty-two dash fifty-four, twenty-two dash one oh nine, twenty-three dash fifty-two, and twenty-three dash eighty-five by amending sections four and six thereof and twenty-three dash eighty-five by amending sections four and six thereof to change the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein to change the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Pompey and for other purposes. to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Pompey and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemia? Chairman Nemia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of congressional bill twenty-four dash seventy-five on second and final reading. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of congressional bill twenty-four dash seventy-five on second and final reading.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-five. Discussion? It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-five. Discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If none, and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief clerk, please call the roll. If none, and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Aradas. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Aradas. For the state of Ponte, Chairman Christian. For the state of Ponte, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Sigra. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Sigra.
Yes. Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Chor. For the state of Yap, Chairman Chor. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-five. Next bill? With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-five. Next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is congressional bill number twenty-four dash seventy-six for second and final reading. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is congressional bill number twenty-four dash seventy-six for second and final reading. CB number twenty-four dash seventy-six is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty dash fifty-three CB number twenty-four dash seventy-six is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty dash fifty-three amended by public laws numbers twenty dash fifty-seven, twenty dash sixty-one, twenty dash sixty-nine, amended by public laws numbers twenty dash fifty-seven, twenty dash sixty-one, twenty dash sixty-nine, twenty dash ninety, twenty dash ninety-one, twenty dash ninety-six, twenty dash one thirty-two, twenty one dash ninety-two, twenty one dash one thirty-five, twenty dash ninety, twenty dash ninety-one, twenty dash ninety-six, twenty dash one thirty-two, twenty one dash ninety-two, twenty one dash one thirty-five, twenty one dash one sixty-eight, twenty one dash one eighty-nine, twenty one dash two forty-seven, twenty one dash one sixty-eight, twenty one dash one eighty-nine, twenty one dash two forty-seven, twenty-two dash forty, twenty-two dash eighty-four, twenty-two dash ninety-four, twenty-two dash one fourteen, twenty-two dash one seventy-five, twenty-two dash two oh two, twenty-two dash forty, twenty-two dash eighty-four, twenty-two dash ninety-four, twenty-two dash one fourteen, twenty-two dash one seventy-five, twenty-two dash two oh two, and twenty-three dash one oh four by amending sections three and five thereof and twenty-three dash one oh four by amending sections three and five thereof to change the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein to change the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the state of Pompey and for other purposes. for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the state of Pompey and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemia? Chairman Nemia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of congressional bill twenty-four dash seventy-six on second and final reading. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of congressional bill twenty-four dash seventy-six on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-six. Discussion? It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-six. Discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If none, and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegation. If none, and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegation. Chief clerk, please call the roll. Chief clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Aradas. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Aradas. For the state of Ponte, Chairman Christian. For the state of Ponte, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Sigra. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Sigra.
Yes. Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Chor. For the state of Yap, Chairman Chor. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-six. Short recess. With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number twenty-four dash seventy-six. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Next bill, Chief clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next bill is congressional bill number twenty-four dash seventy-seven for second and final reading. CB number twenty-four dash seventy-seven is a bill for not to appropriate the sum of two million one hundred thousand dollars from the General Fund of the Federated States of Magnesia for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Pompey, and Chuk states and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for the passage of congressional bill twenty-four dash seventy-seven on second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, CB number twenty-four seventy-seven. Discussion? Chairman Golin? Congress is back in session. Chairman Golin?
Speaker?
Yes.
Move to offer a written amendment to CP twenty-four dash seventy-seven. It's been moved and distributed to our members. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered written amendment to CB number twenty-four dash seventy-seven be adopted by Congress. Floor leader, any?
Mr. Speaker, I move that any relevant rules that may impede our action on the
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the rules that may impede our on the proposed amendment, written amendment by Chairman Golin be suspended. Any objections? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the suspension say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We are now on discussion of the offered floor amendment to CP twenty-four dash seventy-seven offered by Chairman Golin and because of its length, we'll dispense with it. Discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Chairman?
I would like to open an amendment to the amendment offered by Chairman Golin. Offerment under item section C, third word extension, insert the following words. I'll spell it out. N A N space W E L I N G S R O H I comma space capital letter U. So move.
You said, Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
Senator Chor, is that Russian?
That's the Pompey and the amendment is on behalf
Now we'll enroll you.
Alright.
Okay, so there is that amendment to the amendment offered by Chairman Chor to the floor amendment offered by Chairman Golin. And Chairman, after session, can you please pass that written note to Chief clerk? So any discussion on the current motion for amending the amendment?
Question?
If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the oral amendment offered by Chairman Chor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The amendment offered by Chairman Golin has now been amended. We're on discussion on the offered floor amendment, written amendment to CB number twenty-four dash seventy-seven offered by Chairman Golin. Any further discussion? No objection. Question has been called for. Debate is now closed. We will vote on the offered CP twenty-four dash seventy. All in favor say aye. Opposed say nay. Motion carried. Amendment has now been adopted. We now have CB twenty-four seventy-seven, CD one.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion on CB number twenty-four dash seventy-seven, CD one. Chairman Chor?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we defer CB twenty-four dash seventy-seven, CD one to tomorrow's session.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer its action on CB number twenty-four dash seventy-seven, CD one to tomorrow's session. The motion is not debatable, so we will vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say nay. Motion carried, the number twenty-four dash seventy-seven, CD one has been deferred tomorrow's calendar for action. Next bill, Chief clerk?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, short recess. Any further discussion or resolution? No objection. Question has been called for. Debate closed. We will vote on the adoption of CR number twenty-four dash seventy. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR twenty-four dash seventy. Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker?
Chairman Nemia?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to go standing committee report on Yes. To move on to Congress, standing committee item fifteen, standing committee reports. No objection. We will vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say nay. No standing committee report calendar. Chief clerk, next?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Standing committee reports are awaiting number twenty-four dash ten.
Chairman Nemia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for all placement of standing committee report in session four on today's calendar. It's been moved and seconded that Congress will place standing report number twenty-four dash four. The rules are still suspended on the placement of standing committee reports. On the basis. No further discussion, no objection. Debate closed. We will vote on some motion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress now based on this committee report for standing number twenty-four. You heard next?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Next quarter, item number fifteen, number two, number twenty-four, number twenty-eight, twenty-six, which is from your committee on amending for adoption.
Chairman Nemia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for that standing committee report twenty-four four. It's been moved and seconded that Congress have standing committee report number twenty-four dash twenty. And no objection. Close. We will vote on that. All those in Opposed say aye. Motion doesn't have standing report number four.
Yes.
Any object? Go down by the next.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The bill calendar, congressional number twenty-four, appropriate one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-one thousand from the state of Pompey. The rates are marking for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, one twenty-six. The government, special costs, contributions, capital resources, and structures, budgets, and offices, and contract disputes, and
Chairman, Mr. Speaker, I move for that session of congressional bill. So it's been moved and seconded that Congress have Number forty-eight. Mr. Speaker, please. Come on, man. It's. We have. You have to. So move. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. Thank you. Number twenty-four dash seventy-eight, under three. Any further discussion? If none, we will vote on the number forty-eight by all. Number three, roll.
Mr. Speaker. Then also, my. Sir. 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 Mark. From this. Most. The speaker, we come from the. Twenty-seven.
That Congress has passed on first reading, see. Four, seven, eight, nine.
Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? We will down to the resolution.
Mr. Speaker, like with with following today's action. Um, for that, if CR number twenty-four is. CR number twenty-four fifty-eight, CR twenty-six three, and CR twenty-four C four.
It's been moved and seconded that we can play following resolutions. CR number twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-three, and twenty-four, sixty-four, sixty-two. Discussion? None will vote on this motion. Today, all aye. Congress now can debate resolution calendar. CR number twenty-four fifty-five, before that, six, four, six, three, twenty-four, sixty-four. Short recess. Chief Clerk, it's ready.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the resolution, I'm going to put the question.